Council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen, and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Linehan.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Seika.
Here.
Simonelli.
Winslow.
Winslow here.
Spatafora. Spatafora here. As a reminder, under the provision of the open meeting law, for those in attendance, please be informed that the UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meeting, so be aware there will be audio and video recording of this meeting. First order of business. Under guest citizen achievement, Maria Luiz will appear before the council on behalf of Mayor Christensen's office to introduce the city's new language access coordinator, Elena Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City Council Maria Luiz, 1410. I don't know why I was just giving you my address.
That's fine.
1410 Eastern now.
I'll stop you when you start giving out your banking information.
I'm here this evening to introduce our new language access coordinator. As you recall, in the last session of council, we committed $350,000 of ARPA funds to support a two-year initiative that's focused on development and implementation of a language access plan. So to implement that plan and to help us with the process, we posted a language access coordinator position back in January and went through a process of interviewing candidates. And we were pleased, three weeks ago, to welcome Elena Martinez, who's here with us tonight, and her daughter is here as well to support her mom. And Elena has already hit the ground running. She's been here for about three weeks now and has already met with some of the city departments and is going to help us, and she can explain some of the ideas she has. But basically, right now, she is meeting with department heads and trying to assess where the needs lie and how we can better be more accessible to the community, given our diverse populations. So I'm going to have Elena come up and introduce herself.
Sure.
Hello.
Welcome, Elena. How you doing?
Thank you.
Welcome to Malden.
Thank you.
Before we begin, we've got to introduce your daughter, too, though. We've got to put her on the spot.
My daughter Valeni Gonzalez Martinez.
Welcome to Malden.
And we are actually community members. I've been here for 19 years. So I am very familiar with faces and the process. I have been on the other side, and I'm just so thrilled. I'm happy, you know, just to be of service to the community. As a language access coordinator, I think I'm looking at this from the point of view of community, of equity, and, you know, just making sure that the community understands in their own language what we have here, what services we are creating and we have available for them. So that will be pretty much my job. Make sure we're using simple language, which there are some federal mandates, and, you know, making translation, interpretation, and other services available to the community, and informing them that it's their right to ask us anytime. If they don't understand, you know, they are welcome to ask. Raise your hand anytime. Stop me anytime. So that's pretty much, you know, how I see it. Working all together as one big department, and everybody has their own duties and their own responsibilities to the community.
So Elena, we're going to put you through the trials and tribulation before going to the city council. So I already have a couple lights. So if you mind holding one second, we've got some councils that probably want to welcome you and probably maybe some questions. So Counsel Simonelli, you are first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really have any questions, Elena. We have met in the hallway and in the council office a couple times. We had a few laughs, and already she's been very informative for things going on in my neighborhood and helping me with language barriers. So I just want to welcome you aboard, and, you know, if that was your first day, you smashed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli. Counselor Winslow.
Yes, Elena, welcome on board. I know we've already worked together. If people were down on the Malden River, Elena also has background as a graphic artist, and she did the Louise Stokes River Loop graphics. So that's also a component sometimes of language access in a multilingual community that is, you know, graphics. So that'll be interesting if you can help apply that skill. And then, I don't know if Elena would be ready to answer, or Maria Luiz. I know this council, we passed a resolve recently to ask about Chinese language access in the ballot, so I don't know if anyone is prepared to talk about that tonight, or we can talk about when that might come forward. So I don't know if Maria or Elena is working on that with the clerk's office. So Maria?
That's...
Yeah.
Was your question about the ballots?
Yeah, I mean, I know there's been questions about making sure there's access to Chinese language and transliteration. So I just...
That's still at the State House. The transliterated ballots are still at the State House level, so that has to still pass through the legislature.
So, because, well, I guess anything, I guess I'll make sure that we get that. We were looking for, you know, I know Carol Anne's standing out there, too, I see.
Yeah.
I do want to make sure we focus on that as we come into election season again, so yeah.
And the city clerk probably knows more about this than I do, but I believe they meet regularly with Greater Boston Legal Services, focused on, you know, language and access to the ballots and the polls.
Right. So we were just looking for an update on that. So, yeah, all right. So we'll follow up with the clerk and clerk's office as well, so that's good. Elena, welcome on board.
Thank you.
So great.
Thank you.
About the ballots. Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor O'Malley.
Welcome. I'm really excited to see your great work. I know one of the things that we, the community really wants to see is this building and all of our buildings to serve as like inside-out Rosetta Stones, where you can come in and learn the language and understand what's going on and really help assimilate and share and integrate and share different cultures. I think we have a great opportunity in our schools and our public buildings. Looking forward to seeing the great work you're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel O'Malley. Shut my mic off. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I could not be more excited to see you up here. Elena is a very dear friend of our family. We have worked together on many projects over the years, and the city, kudos, could not have found a more collaborative working person, community-minded. You're just mission-driven in every sense of the word, only working to bring people together. So I am so excited, and of course, to see Valeni. I'm just going to give a shout out over there. Our daughters are besties. So I just want to welcome you, and I'm so excited. The city definitely got a great deal here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald.
I also am just thrilled to see you up here, Elena, and to be able to work with you in this capacity. I know you bring so much to the role as a business owner and longtime community member involved in so many different ways. So just very excited about that and want to make sure that we're doing what we can at the council level to support language access. It's such an important signifier of belonging and that you have a place in this community when things are accessible to you and your language, as well as just, you know, being the very practical things about getting access to city services. So I wanted to just extend a special invitation, as you get settled, to figure out how we can best work together with the mayor's office to make our proceedings at the council level more accessible. I know there's a huge backlog of work in getting us to a clearer standard, and wanted to give an appreciation to Rep. Petrino, who has put in an earmark for even more resources to help clear that backlog. So hopefully that will be, that'll make it through the state budget and give you and us even more to work with. But just really excited to be working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And finally, Counselor Amanda Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elena, welcome. I think you know I'm a longtime admirer of your work, and I'm so glad to see you coming into this role. I would echo what my colleagues, especially Counsel McDonald, have said about there's things we can do to help you or advocate for things that you're finding important that you want to work on, that we can help elevate, let us know. And I also just, you know, one thing that's kind of been on my mind with my constituents that I hear about a lot is, of course, sort of the basic language access issues, both for elections, interacting with City Hall, but also just sort of like culturally competent communications for folks who maybe do have a greater facility with English, or it's, you know, a second language, but they are fluent, and they still are not understanding the way that we phrase things or the way that we communicate. And I've been trying to get better about that myself, things that maybe I phrase a certain way because that's how the city has always explained it, but it's just not resonating, or it takes, you know, that one extra step. I would love to partner on getting better at that stuff as we communicate what we're working on. So just knowing that you have a lot on your plate and not to add more, but just something that I've sort of been thinking about and that I hope we can get to work on eventually.
Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, well, welcome. And I believe you've got a couple of open invitations. Once you get settled, come back. And I'm sure you thought of it, but I think one of the things, there's been some movies on TV that Apple won Best Picture. It's about a deaf family, which if anybody's got the opportunity to watch it, watch it. So what I would, I would hope, too, I know we mentioned all different languages, but obviously access is important for people who are deaf and hard of hearing just as well. So hopefully we bring that to the front of the table.
We have that in progress.
It's unfortunate, sometimes people don't think that way until you're put in a situation or you see that, that it's a different world. During the movie, they shut the volume off, so you can feel like what they're seeing, and it's pretty remarkable to be sitting in those shoes, so. Okay, no other lights. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know, not welcome to Malden, but welcome to City Hall and welcome to the role, your new role. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, let's keep that enthusiasm, because we have one more. Clerk. The Board of Urban Media Arts will appear before the council to introduce their newly-appointed executive director, Tino Lagarde. Welcome.
Hello. So I thank you for having us tonight. I wanted to take a moment to introduce...
I know, we know you, but you probably just want to say your name.
Oh, sorry.
You don't have to say your address, just for the public that's watching.
Ari Taylor, I'm board president of UMA, and I'm at 57 Mount Vernon Street in Malden.
Yeah.
So thank you again for having us tonight. Really wanted to take the chance to introduce you to Tina and all the great works that she is bringing to Malden. Not only is she the new executive director, but she is the newest Malden resident, coming from Burnsville, Minnesota. She passed a vigorous application and interview process, and we are so excited to welcome her here to the community and to Urban Media Arts. So just want to turn it over to her to introduce herself.
Hi.
Welcome.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Hi, Tina.
Thank you so much. Yes, my wife and I just recently arrived, less than four weeks ago, in this beautiful city. We are neighbors of Ari currently, and we're loving every moment of it. So I am super excited, and I feel it's a bit serendipitous that I'm here with Elena tonight, because our mission and our vision are exactly the same. My goal with UMA and my involvement here in the community really is focused on equal access to communication in general, right? So that we're offering opportunities for all of our members to feel like their voice is heard. So that was sort of my platform I stood on in the interview process, and I firmly believe in that. That is my sole belief in life, that every single voice has the right and the opportunity to be heard, and that has brought me to Malden. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did leave my business cards up at the dais. They were printed before I got my cell phone, so the cell phone's on the back, but feel free email, phone call, cell, text. I'm open to any type of communication, so.
So hold on one second. Counsel O'Malley.
I just want to welcome. And could you say your name again, your full name?
Tino Lagarde.
Lagarde. So nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Really looking forward. Obviously, you know, Ari as the chair of the UMA board has really turned around MATV, now UMA, and we look forward to seeing what you'll bring to the organization as executive director.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I just also want to welcome you and to offer you my services for anything, you know, if you need anything. And this is a great city, and you have some big role, you know, to fill, and I'm sure, from what I heard from Ari, that you are up to the task, and that I'm just really pleased to meet you. I actually think we have a meeting scheduled with a community group to meet with you, so I can't wait to ask you some questions in person.
Great.
Thank you.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome your board. It looks like you're going to have a lot of fun over there. If you need somebody for a Saturday night's simo show, I'm available.
Awesome.
All right?
Awesome.
Happy to come on there for you.
I'll be finding all your hidden talents.
All right.
Don't worry. There'll be, I'll find them.
I'd like to get on there, start my own show. I'm ready for that.
All right, come on over.
All right. I'll hold you to it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, you don't know what you're promising. Counsel Winslow.
So Tina, welcome to Malden. My wife and I, we bought a home about 30 years ago, just about the time MATV started. So it's, UMA is going through, you know, again, the exciting transition over the past few years, and looking forward to your leadership and just let us know however we can help. And I really like your focus on, you know, equal ability to communicate. That's a really very fundamental thing that we all need to do and what community access has always been about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else, so I will formally too welcome to Malden. In my day job, I get to travel through Minnesota probably once a month, so it's going to be much warmer here, I promise you. We don't have any Casey's Pizza, but we have plenty of really good pizza places around here, so I'm sure you'll assimilate to the food, the food and the culture here pretty well. So welcome again, and I'm sure we'll all see you at our travels and certainly see you around.
Please come on over.
We know you are.
If you watch up, so.
Thank you so much. Have a great day. Clerk, next order of business. It's public comment, I do have two emails that I received. Okay. Any other record? Lisa, could you get, Lisa, could you get that sheet to see if there's any? I don't know if there is. The first letter is regarding Paper 144-22. Dear members of the city council, we strongly support that the city of Malden join the growing number of municipalities that smartly aggregate their electricity supply. The Friends of the Malden River are working side by side with different organizations to combat and adapt to the consequences of climate change. These organizations are focused, focusing on the public and environmental health and environmental justice communities, including Malden. Reducing the burning of fossil fuels is a critical piece to reduce the burden of changing climate for our next generations. Most residents do not have the time bandwidth to resource and secure the best choice of economical green energy. Years ago, personally, I was misled by 100% wind company, Veridian Energy, and it took a year to rectify the misinformation. This would have been avoided by a city-vetted electrical supply. We also strongly urge that the city of Malden not choose hydroelectricity as an option for clean energy. Hydroelectric generation and transmission is not green, ethical, or sustainable option. Hydropower dams destroy river ecosystems, release large quantities of carbon and methane from indented green space, impinge on indigenous lifeways, and can impact disadvantaged and environmental justice communities, particularly in rural areas. We must think globally as we make our major and local decisions. We respectfully ask that this process of securing the municipal aggregation of electricity is accelerated and put in the place in a timely manner. We thank you for your support to create an economically and environmentally conscious energy decision for our city. Sincerely, Karen Buck, on behalf of the Friends of Malden River, 323 Forest Street. And then the second one is, dear esteemed members of the city council, on behalf of our local chapter of 350 Mass, an organization which addresses climate change, I would like to thank you for considering municipal aggregation of electricity in Malden. This is a win-win proposal in terms of saving money for residents, addressing climate change, and creating municipal independence from a very limited and outdated utility company. Many other communities have already implemented this program and figured out how to make it work. So the Energy and Sustainable Committee has good models on which to base this program. Our city will be given the power of choice about our energy supply, both to use more renewable energy and protect residents from the widespread scams of independent energy supply salespeople. Help us bring this wonderful proposal to fruition. Thank you very much. Deborah Kirshner, 131 Pleasant Street, apartment 306. Okay. Next order of business. Next order of business. Approve of the minutes, minutes of the meeting, Paper 223-22, minute of the meeting of April 26, 2022, and Paper 224-22, minutes of the meeting of May 3, 2022. Okay. I don't see any amendments or changes to that. On Counsel Condon's motion to approve the minutes for the 26th, April 26, and May 3, seconded by Counsel Seika, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries 11-nothing. Minutes are approved. Next order of business. We have some more appointments. Yeah. A lot of them don't need counsel confirmation. Paper 225-22, mayoral reappointment, Michael B. Fixman of 14 Norwood Street, Everett, as a constable to serve process in the city of Malden effective June 1, 2022. Said term to expire on June 1, 2025. Confirmation is not required. Please let it file. Motion. Yep. On Counsel Simonelli's motion to place on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 11-nothing to place on file. Next order of business. On Counsel Simonelli's motion to place on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is placed on file. And for those watching, the general public, these are not appointments made by the city council. This is made for the mayor's office, so we have no real say or decision in this process. So we're just accepting that and placing on file, just for anybody who might be trying to keep score at home. Next order of business. Paper 228-22, mayoral reappointment, Robert Rotundi, 130 Linden Ave, Malden, as a member of the Malden Redevelopment Authority Board, upon confirmation by the city council. Said term to expire May 1, 2027. Counsel confirmation is required. Yep, on, you want to speak, Counsel Simonelli? Okay, Counsel Simonelli for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Paper 228-22 is Robert Rotundi. I think most of us know Robert Rotundi, big into baseball, been around for a while. Bob has been sick for a little while, so it's hard for him to come out of his house right now. So I would recommend that where it's a reappointment and the guy's been in this position for over, well, not this position, but been in the city and working in the city, whether it be Babe Ruth, whether it been pocket permits or what have you, you know, to make him come out and come to the subcommittee where he has to wrap his legs up and, you know, he's not feeling very well. I'd like to make a motion that we pass this motion out tonight.
Okay, we do have a motion, we do have a second of it. Counsel Seika, any discussion of the motion? Counsel, is that you? Do you have your light on? Counsel Condon, is that you?
No.
Okay. Anybody have, let me just shut your light off, so that might have been before. Any discussion? Counsel O'Malley.
Yeah, I was putting my light on to second that. I would definitely like to see this confirmed on the floor, so if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to be the second for that. Mr. Rotundi has really been an amazing person for our community. He's really kind of carried it, whether it was the parks before, and like you said, so I do think this is a great reappointment, and I look forward to him seeing, seeing him serve in the capacity of the Malden Redevelopment Authority in their new form. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, Counsel Seika, no problem?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Simon, I want to make sure I'm not stifling anybody else here. Oh, Counsel McDonald, sorry. Counsel McDonald? Did you touch it, Counsel McDonald?
I didn't touch it. Thank you. I'm having support...
I'm taking that button off.
I didn't touch it. I didn't touch it. I'm learning. I'm having support for the nomination on the floor. Can someone help me understand the path of the Malden Redevelopment Authority Board, given that the Malden Redevelopment Authority does not really exist anymore?
I will attempt to. I don't know if anybody else here wants to take a better shot. So I believe the board is kept intact because there is still some legal obligations that they have to close out in terms of moving property, as well as, by having that board, it allows us to use certain things in the future that the government, meaning the state, allows redevelopment authorities to do, and by getting rid of that board, it alleviates our ability to do so. So the board would be there until, I think, either businesses concluded, transfer of property, and, I don't want to use the word dormant, but just kept there in the event they want to use the powers.
Specific to the redevelopment.
Correct.
Got it.
That would be, that would be my guess, if anybody on the council committee...
Well said, Mr. President.
Okay, Counsel, okay, Counsel Linehan may have more. Counsel Linehan.
I don't know if I have more. I just wanted to say that it's in alignment with what other existing redevelopment authorities that are still on the books in places like, I think, Salem.
Springfield.
Springfield. I want to say Cambridge or Somerville. There's like only a few out there still, but they've retained their boards to be able to exercise the same kind of legal obligations that Counsel Spatafora mentioned, but it is a consistent form of governance, I guess, that keeps us in line with that.
Thank you. Counsel Winslow has the light on, too, so Counsel Winslow...
Yeah, I mean, attorney might not, might know, but MRA is a creature of state law as well, so it was formed in 1960, so all those states, that special state statute decreed, it's still in place. And as I say, quite a few communities keep their redevelopment authority in place, just in case they do have special powers, especially related to acquiring and transferring land that's useful at times, so. But yeah, it is actually a creature of state law. Thanks.
Motion.
Good question, Counselor.
Motion.
Okay, so on Counsel Simonelli's motion, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, on approving the reappointment of Barbara Rotundi, 130 Linden Ave. Do we need a roll call for this? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Rotundi is reappointed, 11-nothing. Next order of business. Paper 229-22, mayoral reappointment, Deborah A. Burke, executive director of Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, as a city planning representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Said term to expire July 1, 2025. Confirmation is not required. Counsel Simonelli for the paper.
Motion filed.
Okay, on Counsel Simonelli's motion, you said a file? Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was reading ahead. Yes. On Counsel Simonelli's motion to place on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Deb Burke is placed on file, 11-nothing. Next order of business. We have several licensed petitions, as in the chair of the license... No, go ahead.
to be able to exercise the same kind of legal obligations that Counsel Spatafor mentioned. But it is a consistent form of governance, I guess, that keeps us in line with that.
Thank you. Counsel Winslow has the light on too, so Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, I mean, attorney might know, but MRA is a creature of state law as well, so it was formed in 1960. So all those states, that special state statute decree is still in place. And as I say, quite a few communities keep their redevelopment authority in place, just in case they do have special powers, especially related to acquiring and transferring land that's useful at times. So, but yeah, it is actually a creature of state law.
Motion.
Good question, Counselor.
Motion.
Okay, so on Council Seminelli's motion, seconded by Counsel O'Malley on approving the reappointment of Barbara Rotandi, 130 Linden Ave. Do we need a roll call for this? No? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Mr. Rotandi is reappointed, 11-nothing. Next order of business.
Paper 229-22, mayoral reappointment. Deborah A. Burke, Executive Director of Offices Strategic Planning and Community Development, as a city planning representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Said term to expire July 1, 2025. Confirmation is not required.
Council Seminelli for the paper.
Motion filed.
Okay, on Council Seminelli's motion. You said a file? Yeah, I'm sorry, I was reading ahead, yes. On Council Seminelli's motion to place on file? All those in favor? All those opposed? Deb Burke is placed on file. 11-nothing, next order of business.
We have several licensed petitions, is in the chair of license? Chair of license asked that I read them all at once. Paper 230-22, petition. Open-air parking lot, Reggano's, Inc., of 1152 Eastern Ave. 10 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 231-22, petition. Open-air parking lot, Reggano's, Inc., of 1176 Eastern Ave. 15 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 232-22, open-air parking lot, Reggano's, Inc., of 1081 Felsway. 20 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 233-22, petition. Open-air parking lot, Emmanuel Baptist Church, 20 Madison Street. 20 spaces, it's a renewal. And paper 234-22, petition. Second-hand dealer or pawnbroker, Great Eastern Vintage, 258 Highland Ave. Second-hand dealer, it's a renewal.
Okay, on council, these are all being referred. On Counsel Seca's motion to refer to licensing, seconded by Counsel Condon, I heard him first, sorry. So seconded by Counsel Condon, all those in favor to refer to licensing? All those opposed? Eyes have it, 11-nothing. Items are referred to licensing. Next order of business.
Paper 235-22, motion for reconsideration on the date of April 27, 2022. Prior to the deadline of 12:15 a.m., per the previous evening's adjournment of the city council meeting, both Councillors O'Malley and Linehan independently moved for reconsideration of Paper 190-22, which confirmed Dino Summers as a member of the Cannabis License and Enforcement Commission.
Okay, just to get some housekeeping items here. A yes vote will reopen the topic of discussion, and another vote on Paper 190-22. A no vote will leave the decision of April 26 intact, and then we shall reconsider the vote to appoint Dino Summers. Who wants to speak? Counsel O'Malley first, and then Counsel Linehan? Or Counsel, oh, did I say Counsel O'Malley, right? Okay, Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to reconsider. I know we haven't taken the vote to do that yet, but I just wanted to sort of briefly explain, and I've had a lengthy conversation with Counselor Seminelli, who I serve on this committee with, who chairs it. I guess I would want to start by just saying, you know, this committee, Personnel and Appointments, is bogged down with a lot of work this year. We're working as fast as we can to get through the appointments before us. We've created some new committees this year that really make the workload quite onerous. And with respect to the work that we're doing, I know that we, you know, we talk almost probably weekly about what we have coming up next, what we need to move fast, what, you know, how can we get through everything without slowing down the work of the boards and commissions? The CLAC is one of the, you know, a very high-stakes board. I know that this is an appointment that we had a lot of resumes that came through for. As a committee, we talked a lot about how we could do the process the right way and interview all of the applicants that came in that we judged we wanted to meet after reviewing the resumes and not have a process that dragged on a long time. I want to own the role that I play as the vice chair in agreeing to a process that I now, in hindsight, feel went too quickly for my own, you know, ability to do my own due diligence and feel like my vote took place in a time where I had proper consideration, where we were able to interview enough people and really give the consideration that this seat deserves. And this is no indication of how I feel about this particular person, but I think the process that we started on, we had 13 or 14 resumes that came in. We had to very quickly decide how to narrow it down. I know, you know, two or three weeks back, Counselor Murphy had expressed some reservation about how quickly we were being asked to review those. We proceeded nevertheless. We read them, we put forward three names to interview the next week. Due to circumstances beyond our control, where one person was disqualified and one person dropped out, we basically were left with only interviewing one candidate. And as I got up the next morning after that meeting that I know we all can't forget, going to past midnight, I know I didn't get home until 1:00 in the morning, I really just felt like I hadn't given the proper consideration that, you know, our constituents expect us to do, to do the due diligence, to interview a broad swath of the public who apply, and to give it some time to think about it. And so I did exercise the right to ask to reconsider the vote. I appreciate your consideration and listening to what my reasoning is tonight, and I would defer to Counsel O'Malley, who I think had filed separately to do the same.
These are in order. I'm going to go to Counsel O'Malley, then Counsel Seminelli, and then Counsel McDonald. Okay, so Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you. You know, similar to what Counsel Linehan said, you know, I, we have had a lot of things going on. We all have different things in our personal lives here on the city council. I don't serve in personnel. So I really defer to the members of personnel and the chair of personnel to kind of run that process and run that process in a fair and transparent manner. This was not on my radar two weeks ago when this came before the council, but it was pretty much a surprise how this process went. We've never really seen a process like this where you have close to a dozen people get whittled down to one person, and then that one person get interviewed and then voted and confirmed in the same night. That's a very unusual thing to happen. And of any committee that I think that we don't want that type of doubt kind of clouding over it would be the CLAC. I mean, we hear about people in other cities in Fall River getting indicted. We hear about all these crazy things. If there's any committee in the city of Malden that should not have a cloud over it, it is this particular committee. There were close to a dozen members of our community who put their name in the hat and deserved a fair opportunity to be met with and considered. It came to my attention that in the committee, the process that was used was a secret ballot, where the votes were not exactly transparent. We don't actually know who voted for what candidates, and we don't know how those three candidates were named. And then, as was indicated, one person was disqualified when they most likely shouldn't have been, because it's not a conflict of interest to have a family member serving on another board and commission. That's not a conflict of interest. And it left one candidate to be recommended to the full council. I don't think it's fair to the other residents who applied. They deserve a fair hearing. I hope the council would hear that and realize that in the sake of transparency, it is worth sending this back to personnel, interviewing the candidates that the members of that committee want to interview, and giving everyone a fair shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Before I turn over to Counsel Seminelli, I will remind this council, we will have decorum in this matter, and our motions get to be boiled up, but I want to make sure everybody gets a turn, but just realize that we are colleagues. And if I hear any type of chatter with the person speaking, I will bang the gavel. So just forewarn, Counsel Seminelli, because there's a lot of mics on, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Counsel Seminelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, let me first begin with, we had 11 candidates come before us. 11, not 13, not 12, 11. And right, my co-chair, Counsel Linehan, is perfectly correct. When we say that the Personnel Committee, Appointments and Personnel Committee, is a very busy committee, it could get easily bogged down. We have appointments coming to us constantly. I think I have made the argument up here on three separate occasions, on a way that we can prohibit that from being bogged down like it has been, this committee, by reappointments, voting them all on the floor. If you don't have any problem with anyone, I know that Counsel McDonald had made a good point about maybe seeing the resumes beforehand, and if we had any issues with them, then we can call them in at that point. And, you know, just a point of information, the city council can call anybody in at any time. So if we find as though that that person may not be doing their job or what have you, we call them before us. But to continuously calling people like Barbara Rotandi and other folks to come in to the subcommittee and bog that committee down, and I think if you want to get to know that person and know what they're doing, and if you're a new council like myself, you make a call to them and you go meet them on their terms, whether it be at City Hall or whether it be out for a cup of coffee, we don't want to start bogging down committees with, I just want to meet this person and get to know who this person is, because I'm a newly elected official. So that's that. So we've been before this body, like I said, three times. And three times it was denied. And now I think that my co-chair, Counsel Linehan, is feeling that, and she's understanding that as well. And I know that Counsel McDonald on the committee has mentioned that in the past, and has talked about maybe seeing how we can speed up the process. So getting back to the cannabis committee, we had 11. We had 11 candidates. I was not, we did not have time to interview 11 candidates. And, you know, nobody knows the backstory to anything, especially if you don't, you're not on a committee and you haven't shown up to one sidebar of the committee, which I think is embarrassing, to be honest with you. And then to make accusations of my character and my integrity and my honor, I think is quite ridiculous. So how we did it was, we did a series of questions. I guess that must be a secret ballot. And we asked a series of questions, and then we, as a committee with no speaking, Legal was in the room with us, and they would put down who their top three choice was, because we wanted to look down at one position, three candidates from 11. That's how we did it. One of the candidates decided they didn't want to do it, they backed out. The second candidate was not disqualified. I don't think anybody even said that that person was disqualified. I don't even know if it's legal for me to say what she said in the subcommittee. It doesn't really matter. But the fact of what she said, nobody said that she was disqualified for that. That was your own vote. That was your own judgment. If you felt as though that you didn't want to vote for her because of what she said, that's your vote. Nobody told anybody in that committee anything different. So, and then that brought it down to the candidate who's sitting in the audience tonight, Dino Summers, who was voted in. I don't see no malice or intent of malice, of wrongdoing, in that subcommittee whatsoever. And again, I just find it to be offending that a member of this body that does not sit in the committee, not on the committee, and hasn't attended one meeting, can make such allegations. Hey, that might be something dishonest, not knowing how to run a committee, not one. So that's the backstory on the way the process was done and it was designed. Opening for questions.
We have a long list, and we, remember, I have the ability. Three times, we're not going to go round robin and keep on doing this. We're going to let everybody speak and then move on. So Counsel McDonald, you're next. And then Counsel Seca, and then Counsel Condon Hayes. So everybody knows where they are, and then we'll go down to Counsel Winslow, Counsel Murphy. So I want everybody to know where they stand. Counselor McDonald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, I appreciate this motion to reconsider. I actually didn't really realize that was a thing that we could do. So that's good to know. But I just want to speak for myself and say, I think these conversations are so hard because they're about the process, but they're also personal, and they're about an individual involved. And so I just want to recognize that that's difficult and that's particular. And so I'm sorry for that, because my concerns are not about the individual, per se. It's about how we got here. I think Counselor Seminelli's summary was, is my recollection as well. I don't think there was anything untoward about the process. However, in the end, I abstained in the committee vote because I wanted the opportunity for our legal department to have an opinion on this qualification issue, which we didn't have in real time. And I think the, you know, the sense in the room was that it was not going to be appropriate to consider that person, and then we didn't have, you know, we didn't have a determination one way or another. So I, you know, I will recognize also that after midnight, when this came to a vote, you know, I didn't know how to address that. And so this is a great, actually, this seems like what this should be for, is if we're all exhausted after being in these chairs for hours. This gives us a chance, in the light of day, to just think through our process one more time. So I will be supporting the opportunity to reconsider with the hope that we can go back and interview one or two more of the folks that we wanted to, who would have been sort of next in line, just so that we can, you know, and if that continues to show that the candidate we selected is the most qualified, most appropriate, then I will be happy to support that nomination, and that'll be affirmed. But I really want to make sure that in the Personnel Committee, we, as Counsel Seminelli alluded to, we're trying to figure out a lot of different process points so we can move smoothly, quickly, and fairly to our applicants. And so I'm also hopeful that we'll be able to talk in the Personnel Appointments Committee, how to make sure that if we end up in this situation again where somebody drops out, you know, like what's our backup plan? And so that we don't get caught in these situations again. So I don't think it was, I don't think there was anything that anybody did wrong. I just think that the process conspired against us in this case to not give us the opportunity to consider as many applicants as I think is appropriate in such a consequential appointment. So I appreciate the opportunity to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counselor Seca.
Thank you, Council President. Counsel O'Malley, last year I had the pleasure of sitting on the Appointments and Personnel Committee, and I remember voting for a board of health member in the room over to our right. And we also wrote down our top three choices on a piece of paper to decide who we were going to interview. This is not something that we've never done before in that committee. I don't know if you've ever sat on it. We've done it numerous times. And in the last nine years of me being a city councillor, we've always had a dozen resumes that we have narrowed down to about three. I think that reconsidering it, not knowing all the facts, was not very good. I think Counsel Linehan, you know, I understand where you're coming from, where you didn't like the process, but you voted for this candidate out of that committee. You could have made a motion to table that evening, and you didn't. And as far as this being rushed, it was far from rushed, because I think it was two, it might have been three Tuesdays ago at this point, because we voted for Dino two Tuesdays ago. They sat, the Appointments and Personnel Committee sat in that room for over an hour and a half discussing things. And I remember it, because I couldn't believe that meeting started at 5:30, and they were still in there well after 7:00. Some of the councillors didn't even come in to the chamber so we could make a motion to, you know, so we could call the meeting to order and leave that evening, because it was a committee night. So I don't necessarily, I don't appreciate you saying there was secret ballots and we did things that we don't normally do, because we've done them for years, exactly that way. With a piece of paper, top three, that way there, Lisa takes the papers, she counts them up, and we interview the top three. Somebody pulling out of this had nothing to do with us. And then the other one who, I didn't follow this process. I didn't even go in that meeting. But from what I hear, the other candidate had, you know, made reference that her husband sat on another board, and there could have been a conflict. I never heard anybody say that she was disqualified. I think, like Counsel Seminelli said, that was somebody's opinion. And I am willing to, I am going to, even though it was quarter past 12, I think that's a poor excuse for all of my colleagues to sit up here and say, because if that's the case, we should probably put a rule on that suggests that no meeting shall go past 10:00 p.m. Because if we're not thinking clearly after midnight, then we shouldn't be conducting any sort of business. So I am standing with my vote from three weeks, two weeks ago, when I voted for Dino Summers, and I think that he's highly qualified for this position, and it's not going to be a case of the fall river mayor. Trust me when I tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seca. I'm going to go Counsel Hayes, Counsel Winslow, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Condon, then Counsel Crowe. Everybody knows their order. Counsel Hayes.
Thank you. First, I want to, I would like to thank Counsel Linehan. It's not hard, I mean, it is hard. It's not easy to come up and admit that you might have made, you know, a rash decision or something that you had thought about later. And that's exactly why we have the, you can reconsider, because it does happen. So thank you for really carefully weighing your decisions and putting really a lot of thought behind it. So I would like to stay away from exactly the details that happen in the committees, because I wasn't in there, but I want to stay on the process, our process as a whole. Like, it's a lot of things in community work. The process is the product, so you have to really stick to what our process is. And it sounds like from, for no reason on anybody's wrongdoing that the process fell with only leaving one candidate. Nothing personal against that candidate, I know nothing about him. But when we're accountable not really to each other, we're accountable to the people. Our job is to be accountable to anyone out there who is listening. And I don't think having one applicant, however we got here, is being accountable. And I don't think having one applicant, however we got here, is being accounted, we're not doing our due diligence by having and interviewing one person out of 60,000. Um, so nothing to say, whatever happened in that committee, I have nothing to say on that, but, um, we are accountable to do our due diligence and to get the job done and to give everyone an equal share, uh, at having a position on this very important, um, commission. So thank you very, I'm very much in support of reconsidering and I really want to thank you again for both of you to bringing this to us.
Counsel Siminelli, your point of information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Just to stay on topic with the point of information because I want to be fair to everybody else, alright?
The point is, I'll be quick about it. Point of information, once again, Counsel Colton Hayes, you were not present at the meetings. You weren't there, you're not part of the process. Again, I got to correct you. There were three applicants, not one. You keep saying one. So you're not being fair, listen, don't talk when I'm speaking.
Wait, wait, Counselor, everybody, I, I told you decorum, so please.
You're not being fair when you say about people because they're people too. The process was done fairly. There was time to speak up in the subcommittee if they didn't like the process. So the process was done correctly. I think you mentioned that, but the fact of the matter is there were three candidates, not one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So Counsel, uh, Winslow.
No, um, I, okay, thank you.
Sorry, Counsel, you got it?
Yeah, no, I too, um, you know, not focusing on the particular candidates. I know the Summers families has, um, has had, you know, good relations with my families and that, so I, I, it's not about personal things. I do, I appreciate, um, Chair Siminelli, you know, explaining kind of, um, what the process was planned out and how it, it panned out. Um, you know, just as sometimes often, we plan something, it doesn't quite turn out. And I know, I appreciate, I'm looking over at Counsel Crowe, who was Chair of Personal Administration. We made progress as a city council of, of getting more people to apply and, um, and you know, that puts a more burden on this committee. So I think it's, but I think it's been good. I mean, I was involved, you know, I did set, sit on when we were hiring, uh, you know, getting a couple of new people for Board of Health, very impressed by the candidates. I did not get a chance here to sit down, um, with this group. But, um, the fact that 11 people were interested and I appreciate the, the, the kind of the motivate vote thing to kind of sort things out quickly, I understand we do that efficiently. Um, you know, I don't understand why maybe that didn't have a couple of alternatives. It's not unusual in hiring people or, I mean, I, I had the situation where we were hiring a transportation planner, we, we would have people, uh, we had to go through that process three different times to get a good candidate because we didn't just want to hire someone that, um, did not have the qualifications and that type of thing, just because we were, had the process right. So sometimes, um, so it's not a reflection on Mr. Summers or anything like that, but, um, I, I do think that, um, you know, having the understanding of, um, this, there is some technicality here that, you know, maybe to look at some other candidates. I would be supportive, I, I could say this process, uh, through no, in, no, no fault of anybody on the committee or anything like that, did not go as planned and I, I think it's worth it to take a step back. This is a important appointment. We know sometimes these appointments get renewed very easily. So, um, I, I, I say we're trying to make that balance with the committee of appointing people. I think it's harder, I mean, it was nice before COVID where we could sit down in the, uh, back of the senior center in the back room where we, a very comfortable setting to talk with people. It's just a little bit different with the new City Hall and COVID, we just haven't gotten comfortable with that committee. But I, I do think that here, um, there was a very well planned and intended process that did not happen as planned and I, I think it's worth it. Uh, like I say, I have no, you know, maybe where Mr. Summers might be the ultimate selection, but I, I think a little bit more, uh, comfort level would be very helpful for this candidate, whoever that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. I will just say from the chair before I go to Counsel Murphy, uh, this process, I don't want to say was rushed, I'm not talking about before we get to the Counsel Siminelli's Committee. Uh, we had to put out two ads, I'm looking to the clerk because the first time we got nobody. Uh, and the Cannabis Commission actually called me and wanted to get this moving because they didn't want a two-two vote. Because they felt if they would have a two-two vote, they would stop all licensing for the cannabis. Whether that's the intent, I don't know, but I can assure you before I got to the Counsel Siminelli's Committee, from my perspective, I was having weekly dialogues with the Cannabis Commission because they were concerned having a two-two, which probably would never happen, but if it did, there'd be some egalities. And I do have the clerk here, uh, that we did it out first before the holidays, I think right around Christmas time, we got no candidates and then pretty quickly we got the 12. So just for the, in terms of rushing, there, there was a little bit of impetus to get the posting, to get candidates in here because the Cannabis Committee only has, they have four members, they do not want to have a tie. So there was a little bit of a rush from that and, and they, if, if this isn't, if we decide not to have a candidate, they're probably not going to meet until, until they have that, that deciding factor. So just wanted to give that tidbit of information. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have hired people for 40 years, actually 40 years plus, in my role, um, in the insurance sector. In the business sector, it's common practice to look at resumes and narrow down the amount of individuals that you want to interview. Three's a very common number to look at. Sitting on the city council for my seventh term, I have been through, sat on the Personnel Committee, um, many times, uh, and I've attended many, many meetings. I've also sat on search committees outside of the Personnel Committee. Once again, it's a very common practice to review the resumes and come up with the top three to be interviewed. Okay? That is the practice that we followed in this process. Nothing new, nothing changed, nothing wrong with it, wasn't changed for a specific individual. It's commonly how we have done things. Okay? So I just want to get that straight. Right? As there've been up here many times, I, I hear one candidate, one candidate one more time, I'm going to be ill. Okay? Once again, to reiterate what Counsel Siminelli said, we received 11 resumes. Everyone received those resumes prior to our meeting. They had time to review them, to decide who they might like. We sat in a room, we talked about it, we talked about the questions, we talked about what was important on a resume that we might want to see is someone who is on our Cannabis Count Committee. From those questions, from the resumes in front of us, each of us sat and came up with three people that we thought fit the bill, that we wanted to interview. And those names were brought together and the top three candidates emerged. I probably steal something from Counsel Crowe, but she used to tend to call it cream rises to the top. Okay? And the cream rose to the top through tho, that process. I'm very confident that all three of those individuals would have been good. One of them did basically decide that they didn't want to continue. We interviewed, fully interviewed two candidates. Okay? We didn't reject one and only interviewed one. We sat and we interviewed both of them for a good 20, 25 minutes each. And then they left. And then we as a committee decided who, what we did have a conversation about was there a conflict of interest? We had legal in there, the legal, um, Mr. Saher, our attorney, basically said it wasn't a conflict of interest that we would normally think of. Um, and, you know, it wasn't something that would exclude this particular individual from the decision make, decision-making process or the vote. We voted, a name was put forward, we voted, that person, Mr. Summers, is fully qualified. Okay? There's no doubt in my mind that he can, he can do this job and he will do it well and he will represent the interests of the citizens of Malden. Okay? I think it's kind of, I know there's new counselors up here and they don't understand the process and, you know, maybe they feel that they're doing this correctly. But I think it's actually an insult to Mr. Summers and it's also an insult to anyone who comes in to us to be interviewed. Okay? I am not going to support reconsideration tonight and I am going to vote for Mr. Summers again because he is a, a good candidate for this particular position. Okay? And he deserves it. And, um, I'm just actually, um, kind of, I don't want to use the word ashamed, but I, I think that bringing this out tonight is not a good thing for the council. I think we should have, um, worked through it in the Personnel Committee going forward to come up with, if people don't like the process, they should have put forth how they'd like it changed as we move forward, as opposed to make this a public spectacle like it is this evening. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Condon.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I've been up on this council for 17 terms and I, I have to be honest with you, I've never seen councils like this that throw out these endowindos that mean nothing. Okay? There's no substance behind them. The only thing it does, it gets them a headline in a newspaper. And that's just the way it works in politics. But we did nothing wrong. I spent half the morning reading those resumes and I had those top three picked out. And I'd be willing to bet that Mr. Summers, who I have never met before in my entire life, was probably on every one of the members' top three. It would surprise me if they weren't because there's no question about it. He was qualified. We can't control the process. We do it all the time. You cut it down to three, usually it's always three. Once in a while you might go to four if there's two that are tied. But we can't control that part of the process. We had a job to do, we had a qualified candidate. Not someone, I, I never laid eyes on, uh, Mr. Summers in my life, but I could tell through his resume and his involvement in the community that this guy's going to do a good job. That's all I care about. I don't care about another counselor's, a counselor that brings up the mayor from Fall River. It's got nothing to do with the city council. I hold everybody up at the city council in the highest esteem and I'm proud to serve which is. And no one deserves to have that said about any one of us. So I'm not voting for reconsideration for that very reason, the way that come out the way it did. Alright, because maybe we didn't, the couple of counselors that weren't sure, didn't act or didn't know how to act quickly enough to, uh, not to vote on it if they felt uncomfortable with it. But I didn't feel uncomfortable at all because he was, he was the top candidate as far as I was concerned. And that's without even knowing the man. So I'm not voting for reconsideration. You get tired of this stuff. Believe me, if you sit up here and you're, you're not, no one's accusing you, but it's the way it's done. And I hope none of us have to continue to go through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really don't have much more to add because I think everyone said it, but I had gone to all the meetings and, um, really because I had started the process when I was the Chair of Personnel and Appointments and kind of wanted to see it through in some way because we did put out, um, the, the notice. So this seat has been empty for about six to eight months and it really was holding up. And the first time we put it out there, we even extended it, usually put it out for two weeks, we extended it, I think, for another week and then maybe another week after that and we still got nobody. They did the same process, this time we've got 11 people. So, you know, that works out sometimes. The, um, but again, it was, it's been at least six to eight months since this, um, seat has been, um, vacant and it really is holding up those people that are paying rents or doing all their other things, you know what I mean, and, and trying to get their, their applications heard from the clerk. So, and I think, you know, when there is 11, we have routinely, you read them and then you sort of just kind of jot down your top three, almost really to see if there is natural consensus. If the numbers were all over the page and everybody got, you know, one or two, then you'd have to change the process. But when you have, um, a candidate or two candidates or three candidates or even four that all got four votes, then you say, all right, we're going to take all four and then whatever it is. But, you know, where's that break? Usually if you have, um, with 11 candidates, if you had less than two candidates and everybody else had two, you'd have to just kind of relook at the, at the, at the process. So there were three candidates that did kind of rise to the top. Um, and so they, they went to interview those. I was there for the interviews, they both interviewed wonderfully. Either one of them would have been, um, a, a great addition to the, to the clerk. The, um, the third person is unfortunate and I think even at, at that meeting, um, Counsel Siminelli had said it, right? You know what I mean, if there, we have to do, figure out another process if we do have a dropout, do we have a, an alternative? Um, again, it was, might've felt rushed, but it's been going on for eight months, really, or at least probably. So I think that, um, you know, when the, the other person, she was, she was wonderful and it just kind of made people pause, do we, don't I, do I vote for her, is it going to be a conflict? Even legal, as it was mentioned, said, not really what you usually think of. And, um, then people voted the way they voted and like I said, Counsel McDonald wasn't really sure, so he abstained. Um, but I do think that, um, it, it felt like it moved quickly, but we, sometimes we have to make decisions and move some things as quickly as we can without, I mean, um, again, having time to look at the resumes and, and do all the process to make sure that we are, we are following what we need. And, um, so for those reasons, you know, I, you know, um, as Counsel Colton Hayes had mentioned, it's kind of tough to put it out there and say I made a mistake, but I don't think I'm going to be, I'm, I know I'm not going to be, um, supporting reconsideration because I do think the process was via, it was upon person that kind of rose to the top and he was the one that, um, that the committee recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Crowe. So we've gone through everybody who spoke once. Order I have is Counsel Siminelli, Counsel Seager, and then Counsel Hayes, uh, for their second time. So Counsel Siminelli, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listen, I just want to say that, uh, you know, I, I come on here five months ago as a somewhat new counselor, I guess, because I had served before. But a lot of things have changed. So I am a new counselor. I come on. And you know, I, I address the elephant in the room. There's been some friction up here on this council during the election, coming in here, hearing different stories. I mean, I didn't have any friction with anyone. You know, and as my, uh, seventh grade and eighth grade teacher, Mr. Iavino, told me that, you know, everybody starts out with an A and it's up to you to keep it. And, you know, I've tried to reach across the aisle, work with everybody that wants to roll up their sleeves and do business. And, uh, I just find it offending that, you know, in the reconsideration in the course of 24 hours, that I didn't even have the consideration to be called for 10 minutes as the Chairman of the Committee and say, hey, jeez Chris, you know, I think I might've made a mistake. Uh, you know, I'd like to reconsider and here's the reasons why, X, Y, and Z. And then furthermore, you know, um, you know, and I really thought that, and I hope I still can be able to cross the aisle with the different views that are up here and work together. And I think we can. And if anyone would show that, it would probably be myself and Counsel Winslow, because no one got off on the worse foot than him and I on our first night that we met one another. But we were able to call each up, each other up on the phone, sit down, have coffee. And I, I think we became pretty good friends and colleagues. We, we, we have a lot in common that we really didn't know we did. And I've been trying to do that with everyone on this council. And Counsel O'Malley, I, you know, I don't mean to call you right out, but you did to me. I mean, you mentioned transparency. You mentioned transparency. There's no one more transparent than me. What you see is what you get. From five to like seven o'clock every morning at Honeydew Donuts, come on down there, sit down, we hold court, you got any problems, you come see me. For anybody that's out there watching, whether you're a Democrat, whether you're a Republican, whether you're blue, yellow, gold, red, or if you're an alien, my number is 617-579-6421. You got a problem, call me. I'll do the best I can to help you and I'm pretty good at it. And I would put my resume as a city council up against anybody, including you, Counsel O'Malley. My six years in office to your six. See what we come up with. So, and I'm not trying to attack you, Counsel O'Malley. I hope after this meeting you and I can patch up our differences and try and work on some things because I, I do like it and I do think you have some good points and some good views. But the way that I was attacked with transparency, I mean, I, you know, I walk out of my door, I'm transparent. I just walked my neighborhood for two and a half hours today with the mayor and all the department heads. So there's transparency. You mentioned Fall River. This isn't, this isn't the first time in, in your foyer too that you've mentioned certain things that's attack against my honor and my character. I don't know if you don't care for me because I'm in recovery or if I come from the Newland Street housing projects, I, I don't know what it is if I rubbed you the wrong way. But to mention those things in your, in your sentences and with this, to me, is insulting. And this isn't the first time that things were said behind my back to me. You know, and we want to talk about the rush of the process, the Cultural Diversity Cultural Committee. Remember that one? Huh? I guess we didn't do that right either because certain counselors didn't get the person that they wanted. And we were rushed to that process too, were we not? And then all of a sudden, when it wasn't the right folks that you wanted, all of a sudden, we found another month and a half of time to go back to the beginning of the process and post, and post. Didn't want to talk about the people, I want the people that applied to the council posting, not the mayors, the council. But because some of the people on there weren't the people that some people didn't want, they wanted to go to the mayor's list that applied at the mayor's list and not at the council list. I don't see how that's okay. I've got counselors that sent me a text telling me, this is who we want. I hope you do the right thing while we're in the process of interviewing the candidates for the Cultural Diversity Committee. for the Cultural Diversity Committee. Well, that's not a violation? That's not an issue? Listen. Everybody knows what's going on up here. We got to start to learn to get along, work with one another, start putting personalities in front of it or agendas and start doing the right thing for people. What you see is what you get with me. And I've never played anything different with any of us. I called just all up and asked to sit down with you and I sat with most of you for a cup of coffee after the election. Except you, Councilman O'Malley, I had called you several times, you were going to get back to me and you didn't. And we never had a chance to actually sit down and meet. I know you're busy with school and everything because you got to do your homework up here. You're so busy. So I'm just saying, you know, when you're throwing shots at people, man, know where you're throwing shots at. Know your audience.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seminelli. Okay, Councilwoman Seaker for the second time.
Thank you. I'll be brief. He kind of just touched on what I wanted to discuss, but really fast to go back to Councilwoman Crowe. The last time the clerk took applications was in October. So we have had three applicants sitting in queue for the last eight months who, like she said, they're paying rent, they're, they're stuck in limbo here. So we, we really need to, to get this process moving. And I, I do think, I think Councilwoman Murphy and Councilwoman Crowe both said that we should probably, you know, moving forward, if we have councillors up here that didn't like the process, that we should, you know, change the process after this, not during this. And I, I know I'm going to beat a dead horse with this social media stuff again. But the day after we voted to approve the position to Mr. Summers, I saw a thread on Facebook that people were talking about not getting picked. And I'm not going to throw anybody out the bus up here, but somebody, one of my colleagues said, I voted for you. So I do think that Councilwoman Seminelli is correct. I think that there's some colleagues of mine up here that did not get the candidate that they wanted to for this position. And it was in black and white on social media the next day. And I think, I don't know what time this reconsideration came in to go back and forth to see the, the difference. But it could have very well had been some discussion on social media and people feeling bad that they didn't vote for the person that they knew. So again, we should probably keep our business off of Facebook and social media because it is the devil. It, it really, it, it hinders our work up here when we have to focus on posting on, it, it's great for transparency, but it's the devil for other things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seaker. Councilwoman Hayes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cologne Hayes. I have, I'm really sorry to hear that a lot of my fellow councillors are taking this so personally. It's, you know, it's business and I am in support of Councilwoman Lenahan's, you know, her motion to reconsider. There's a couple of things that I've heard up here. I just want to be very clear with what I said. I don't, I'm not questioning the process at all. The process is the product. It is. I'm questioning that sometimes the process happens to like, if that's the end result is what I'm saying. So the end result didn't, it didn't have, I think, we didn't, we only were left with one candidate. I'm not saying that happened like on purpose. That's the truth. So it wasn't anything to your process. I'm sure you did months and months of great work. But again, I work for the people here and you only having one candidate because two other ones have dropped out, you still only have one candidate. I'm not saying you only interviewed one candidate. I'm not saying that you don't, like one, that anybody did anything wrong. And it's okay. It's okay that we all have different opinions. There's not a reason to get mad or angry or start calling out things in the past. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to get our business done. And, and, and it's okay to have differing opinions on how this goes. That's why we're here. That's why there's 11 of us. And I also just, it, business, you know, I've worked in business too. I've hired people for 25 years. I've, I've also sat on committees, but this is not a private business. This is the city of Malden and we're public. Everything we do, we are accountable to the taxpayers. That's who we work for. We don't work for each other. We work for the taxpayers of Malden. So I'm still going to support this. And I also want to fess up that I think Councilwoman Seminelli was talking about me. So I do want to say that I'm not sure, I didn't know that you couldn't text people. So it was one person to one person. So my apologies. I didn't know you were allowed to, you know, I have texted in the past and I've done that when in the mayor's office and we all did. So I might have texted you to say, hey, can you check out this candidate? My apologies if that was something, and I wish that you would have just told me that. I wouldn't have done it again. So anyway, I just hope we move and do the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman Seminelli, I'm going to allow point of information. Just, I want everybody, we're getting into the, we're getting to the doldrums here, right? So then Councilman O'Malley's after you with the point of information. Keep it brief and on point, please, Councilwoman Seminelli. I want to be fair and equitable. Councilwoman Seminelli, point of information.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I, I mean, I can't express it enough. There were three candidates. One person decided to back out. The second person did not back out. So it left two. She just didn't get voted in. That, you keep going back to only one candidate. There wasn't one candidate. And once again, I guess it's like, because you don't sit on the committee, you're not part of the meeting. And I mean, no offense, I mean, you know, but the fact is though, there were three candidates. One backed out.
Okay. So we got it. Three candidates.
Yeah.
Down to two, you get the votes.
It's like you gotta keep repeating it.
We got it. All right. Councilman O'Malley.
You know, I think that decorum is, is important and I think it, it goes both ways. I think that the concerns I have are completely valid. I understand some other councillors don't think the process was flawed. I'm hearing from Councilwoman Seaker for the first time that it's been flawed for a while. This is the first time it came to my attention. We didn't make it a big deal the night of because it wasn't on our radar. After the fact, we learned that the process was flawed, might have violated the open meeting law. No one filed an open meeting law complaint. We're not trying to bust people's balls. Some of us just feel like the process was flawed. It's not your specific fault. I mean, if you're told what my email said, that city staff assisted this. So if you were being told by city staff that it's okay to do that process, then that's part of why it, it's a flawed process. But in the end, as we know, it doesn't matter what our staff tells us, it doesn't matter what the employees of the city tell us. We are the ones where the buck stops. We're the ones who get in trouble. It should be a transparent process. I'm not going to attack you personally. I'd appreciate it if you don't attack me personally. I look forward to having a coffee with you. I look forward to working together with you. Hopefully we can move past this. I'm okay with losing votes. Y'all have the votes. I just want it to be fair and I want it to feel like, I don't want to feel like every time I look at this agenda, I have to scour it and find out what scheme is being perpetrated tonight. I just want to feel like I show up and we vote the way we want to vote and it's fair. I'm okay with losing. I just want it to be fair.
Thank you, councillor. Councilwoman Murphy.
Thank you. And this will be very quick.
And this will be the last one on this topic.
This was very fair. As Councilwoman Seminelli has said and I have said, and we were in the room, there were two candidates. We interviewed them for a good 20, 25 minutes each. Okay? They were both very good candidates. We had good candidates to choose from. It was a difficult decision. Okay? Mr. Summers was the one we chose. He's a good candidate. Okay? I personally don't think the process is flawed. I think using that term flawed is a misnomer in this particular subject of what happened. If we decide we want to change the process, if someone drops out because we, we as councillors decide we always want to have three, that's fine. Okay? There was nothing flawed about this process. And it resulted in us having a great appointment, if we can get to the point of appointing him tonight. So once again, I'm not voting for reconsideration and I am voting for Mr. Summers. So that's all I have to say. And I, I hope the public can read through the lines on some of this stuff.
Thank you, Councilwoman Murphy. I appreciate it. I'm going to be the, the last speaker on this. I will just go on the record of saying this once again. If there was somebody rushing the process, the buck stops here. And the reason why is when I became the president, one of the first calls I received was from Mr. Hogan stating that we needed to fill this position because they were not comfortable meeting without the fifth voter. What I find concerning was, up until having this vacancy, everybody on this, not everybody because it's new elected councillors, was rushing to get all these licenses filled. And we've heard a bunch of reasons why. Taxes, the ability to have this, and that's great. But then when this process, when we sent out the first application, which went out, I, I don't want to say, I don't want, I don't know if I'm wrong. It was around December, maybe early January, we didn't get any candidates. And I meet with the mayor's office every week as the president, like every other president has. And, and, and it came up in several meetings, we need to fill this position because we have candidates. So I was constantly calling the clerk. I called Mr. Seminelli and I said, we need to get this role filled. I had no input. I did not attend in the meetings. And if any councillors probably haven't noticed, I have been very selective in the meetings I go to. Because one thing I learned when I first became a city councillor is the president needs to be a neutral body. Now, sometimes that has gone down the wayside, but that's the rule of the president is to be a neutral body. And that's what I've taken as, as an oath in terms of being the president. I don't know what, I don't know, I didn't see all the applications. I didn't even look at the applications because I felt that's what the committee's duty is for. But I do, you're absolutely right. The councillors have the ability to reconsider their votes and, and that's fine. But the idea to say that we have a flawed process now, I think is not only fair to some, to the, to the members of the committee that basically both said the same thing, that they don't see a problem with it, but maybe they just had more time, is insulting. But what I find more insulting though, what bothers me is the idea that other departments are involved in this conspiracy. And again, if there's a conspiracy, it's with me because I was being asked by the committee to fill this position, to give out the other two licenses. Because that's what we have left is two licenses. It just seems like when we have a process that we want to rush, and then when it doesn't go a certain way, we want to slow it down. That's fine. That's politics, not taking it personal. I will not be supporting reconsideration. I think the committee did their job. I actually am more, actually intentful based on even the testimony from Councilwoman Amanda Lenihan and Councilwoman McDonald. You know, they had great points and understanding, but they voted last week to do this. I understand why they wanted to reconsider. I get it. But I'm going to support my chairman who did a great job going through this and there's a lot of work ahead of us. So I will not be supporting it. I'm going to ask the clerk to do a roll call. Again, for the reminder, this is not a majority vote. You know, I mean, a majority, you don't need two thirds. And I will repeat, a yes vote, let me just make sure I get the right paper here. I just want to make sure I read, okay, here we go. A yes vote will reopen the topic for discussion. Another vote on the paper, which would be the, Paper 190-22. And a no vote will leave the decision on April 26th intact. Again, yes vote reopens it. They did make a motion? Okay. So Council Lenihan is going to make the motion to reconsider? No. Go ahead. Go ahead, councillor. Read it. Go ahead. You want to read it? Say it.
Just to read what's on the docket?
Yep.
Okay. Motion for reconsideration on the date of April 27th, 2022. Prior to the deadline of 12:15 a.m. for the previous evening's adjournment of the city council meeting, both councillors, O'Malley and Lenihan independently moved for reconsideration of Paper 190-22, which confirmed Dino Summers as a member of the Cannabis Licensing and Enforcement Commission.
And it's seconded by Councilman O'Malley? Clerk will call the roll. Again, a yes vote is to reopen and no vote, it stands. And it is a simple majority, not two thirds. I flubbed it earlier, so clerk, call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
No.
Crowe. Lenihan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy. O'Malley. Seaker.
No.
Seminelli.
No.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spetafora?
No.
Reconsideration fails 6 to 5.
Okay. Dino Summers is the member of the cannabis committee and has some work to do. Welcome again, Mr. Dino Summers. Next order of business.
Paper 236-22, order annual appropriation for the FY 2023 budget. I have a letter from the mayor and several financial orders, if I could read them.
Yeah, can I just be real quick before he reads them? So in front of everybody is a copy of the mayor's proposal in here. This is just the highlights. We are using ClearGov. I think every councillor here should know that. That's a software package we purchased, or the city purchased last year, which had, we used a little bit of it last year. This year, we used a little bit more of it. We allowed the budgeting process where it was sent out to the managers to ask them for their wish list. We didn't use that last year because we, I believe it was purchased too close to the budget to do that. So anybody who's been in any type of budgeting process knows the process. You go out to those departments, you ask them their wish list, and then it goes up to, in this case, the mayor's office, and they decide to grant based on funding and support for that level. Also, everybody did receive for the councils before, the members of the big books. The entire budget is on this thumb drive and will be available on the website. And so what we see, the, the residents will be able to see and break it down in terms of transparency. Myself, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Lenihan and the mayor had a discussion with the, the People's Budget, which is a committee that is looking to voice their opinions where the money is meant, money's being spent. We had a call with them and explained this process. Some of them were very happy with what we're doing here in terms of transparency. Certainly, funding is still a question, but I just want to stress that this technology really allows, I would say, the novice at home to look at this big number in a way that breaks down into categories and sees, you know, line item by line item. And there are some things inside the budget that is not reflective in here, some of the debt that is not carried off the books. So just be aware of that. But I will now entertain the, the clerk reading the mayor's letter.
Dear Members of the City Council, I am pleased to present a balanced budget.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Murphy. Councilwoman Murphy, she's looking at me. Councilwoman Murphy, go ahead. I apologize.
I too was at that meeting with the People's Budget.
Oh, that's right, councillor, you were. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you made me chair of finance, didn't you?
I did. I apologize. Councilwoman Murphy, I'm drunk with power tonight.
I'm laughing. Hey, you made my life easy. If the city clerk would read the letter and then I'll have a couple of comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Murphy. I appreciate it.
Dear Members of the City Council, I'm pleased to present a balanced budget for fiscal year 2023, which covers the period from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. As we look at to the year ahead, we do so with cautious optimism. We know that the action taken by our federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, APPA, has provided us with a once in a lifetime opportunity to deliver for our community. We have looked to capitalize on that opportunity by delivering on community needs that are typically beyond the ability of the annual budget, while being ever mindful of not creating ongoing obligations that can't be met within the constraints of the municipal budget. ongoing obligations that can't be met within the constraints of the municipal budget. This budget reflects some of that effort, as we capitalize on APPA funds to keep moving forward on important deliverables like lead lines and stormwater upgrades to minimize the impact of the same on water rates and general fund budgets. We remain aware that we have a plan for significant increases in costs associated with education on several fronts. Our expected contribution as a city has gone up $11 million in two years, far beyond the reality of what our budget can afford. We continue to advocate for a true solution to the inequity. While we saw some of the positive impact of the Student Opportunity Act in the FY 23 Chapter 78, it won't help us deal with the issue of the expected local contribution. We also must plan for the approximately $1.3 million expense that will hit our assessment for the Northeast Folk Building Project, while at the same time dealing with pension costs escalating at an unsustainable rate and inflation that will further, will put further pressure on our expectations at the bargaining table for our employees. The most positive development this year, which enabled us to present a balanced budget with minimal reliance on free cash, was the continued recovery of local receipts. This category, more than any other, reflects the true health of our local economy, and on that front, Malden is alive and well. I know we share the collective goal of transparency and budgeting, including through resident input at the annual budget public hearing. The implementation of the new online budgeting tool last year represented a tremendous leap forward by the city in modernizing our budget process, increasing the depth of information shared with the public, and generally making the annual budget a more comprehensive exercise. We were thrilled when our efforts were recognized with our first-ever Government Finance Office Association's, GFOA, distinguished budget presentation award. This is the gold standard for budgets, and we should all be proud to have achieved this recognition. I expect that each year we will fine-tune our use of this new platform and improve our budgeting process going forward. Each year, our budget not only sets the financial plan for our community, but also acts as a policy document and operations guide and a communication tool. To that end, we are embracing our commitment to sustainability and the environment by presenting the budget for review by the city council utilizing the online digital budget book. I know you'll find this easy to navigate as well as you review and discuss the budget. This budget book also includes appropriations and relevant data for three additional funds, specifically the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Community Preservation Act Fund, and the Cable Access Enterprise Fund. Also, please note that the appropriation order for the general fund is less than the total budget shown in this document, as several line item expenses are funded through assessments from the state, which do not require an appropriation. In following best practices recommended by ClearGov in the GFOA, we will continue to add content to the digital budget book prior to the final submittal of the same for the GFOA award. This will include the further development of a more comprehensive capital planning budget, building off what we started last year. In closing, the fiscal year 2023 budget is hereby submitted as the fiscally responsible plan and a foundational budget as the city's annual operations. I would like to once again thank Chief Strategy Officer Ron Hogan and Chief Financial Officer Chuck Renigan, who have been working on this budget in the continued improvement of our transformative approach since January. I also want to thank our department heads, who actively participated in the budget process through this new platform, resulting in the budget that we can all be proud of. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Gary Christensen.
Mr. Clerk, there was a lot of words there, maybe next year the mayor can trim the amount of words he puts in this letter. Council Murphy for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are going to refer this to finance, obviously, there's a tremendous amount of work to be done. Those of you who are on the finance committee, we will be meeting every Tuesday night for the next five weeks, and probably some off nights, so I'll be speaking with you about what off nights work for you. The goal is going to be to have this referred out of committee on June 14, so that it can come to the full city council on June 21. Okay, that gives us a week. If it doesn't pass on the 21st, it gives us a week to get to the 28th, because if we don't pass it on the 28th, for those of you who are new here, we go to a 1/12 budget, and that's something that we don't want to do, okay? So we have the next, we will have a meeting next week, and that meeting will be to talk about how we want to go forward, what the plan is, I hope that you'll all have had a chance to review the budget by then, we'll talk about the department heads that we want to bring in, those that we don't need to bring in, okay? And as I say, start to schedule out, you know, how we move forward over these next five weeks to actually bring this to fruition and get it voted out of committee. So, a lot of data here, the other important thing is that this is going live, online tonight, so the entire city of Malden will have access to this budget, so you might get questions from some of your constituents, but it's really exciting when you use the word transparency in a great way, this is a great way, this document is so detailed, so granular, and so accessible to all of our constituents, that it's a very proud moment for the city of Malden. I think there's probably many, many cities within the Commonwealth and probably outside of the state that wish they had this type of budgeting process at their fingertips, so that, motion to move to finance.
Yeah, before we make the motion, I think we have to talk to the clerk, we have to read the appropriation of the order of the general fund.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry, yes.
What I'm going to ask is that the clerk reads the order, ordered part of the portion of this, because I think that's part of the legal document, the legal public process, I'm not going to have the clerk read the itemized Schedule B, because it's part of the order anyway, so he will have to read, Mr. Lucy will have to read the appropriation of the general fund, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, other general fund in financial sourcing, Cable Access Fund, and then the Community Preservation Fund. For those following along, it will make sense when you get access, but before I turn it over to the clerk reading to us, I do want to thank the mayor, Mr. Renigan, Mr. Hogan, and certainly Finance Chair, Council Murphy. I was able to attend a couple meetings that they do, this is not something that just materializes overnight, there was some financial engineering, not in a bad way, to make this budget, which is the law, we have to balance this, and I think the mayor hit upon it that even though the city received a tremendous amount of APPA money, that money can only be used for certain things, and is not allowed to come in and backdate the general fund, and there was still a deficiency that the team had to find, about $4 million, and they did, so even though we might be flush with cash in certain funds, there are certain obligations that we have to do, and I just want to thank that team for meeting, I think, weekly, and now the fun begins in going in and looking at it to the new councils, we can certainly take everybody's ideas up, but remember, we can not add, we can only subtract. And the other thing is, I also want to thank all the department heads, because this process, they were certainly involved, like Council Murphy said, even more than last year, just because of using the technology and creating the ability, so I think when we meet with the department heads, this year will be a much easier process, and there'd be no, not there were surprises, but it's certainly a lot easier to walk through this budgeting process as a department head because of the software, so. Without any questions, I will turn it over to the clerk to read the appropriations.
The Order, Annual Appropriation Order for the FY 2023 General Fund. Ordered, that the purpose of defraying the expense of the city of Malden for the budget period fiscal year 2023, 7/1/22 to 6/30/23, together with the interest in municipal indebtedness, the sum of money named in the accompanying Schedule B, being the same, is hereby appropriated to the accounts and for the purpose and objects therein stated and explained, and is hereby provided and ordered that the appropriation enumerated in said Schedule B, being the amount of $182,509,620, and also the sums which will be required as a city proportion of the state and county taxes to be raised in the property estates in the city according to the provisions of the law, and it is further ordered that the interest rate established by law shall be charged from August 2, 2022, and/or November 2, 2022, and/or February 2, 2023, and/or May 2, 2023, upon all taxes to be assessed for the present fiscal year and remaining unpaid on August 1, 2022, and/or November 1, 2022, and/or February 1, 2023, and/or May 1, 2023. Annual order, Annual Appropriation Order for fiscal year 2023 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Ordered, that for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the city of Malden Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for the budget fiscal year 2023, 7/1/22 to 6/30/23, the sum of money named in the accompanying Schedule C, being the same, is hereby appropriated to the accounts and for the purpose and objects therein stated and explained, and is hereby provided, and it is further ordered that the appropriation enumerated in said Schedule C, being in the amount of $32,482,708, and also the sums which will be required as a city's proportion of state and county taxes, be raised in the water and sewer accounts in the city according to the provisions of law, and it is further ordered that the interest rate established by law shall be charged on a monthly basis on all water and sewer bills remaining unpaid 30 days and after the due date. Appropriation Order for Fiscal Year 2023 General Fund. Other finances and sources, ordered that the following budgetary revenue items be adopted as part of fiscal year 2023 budget. Order, Annual Appropriation Order for Fiscal Year 2020 Cable Access Fund. Ordered, that for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the city of Malden Cable Access Enterprise Fund for the budget period fiscal year 2023, 7/1/22 to 6/30/23, the sum of money named, the sum of money named in the accompanying Schedule D, being the same, is hereby appropriated to the accounts and the purpose and objects therein stated and explained, and is hereby provided and ordered that the appropriation enumerated in Schedule D be in the amount of $610,968. Ordered, that for the purpose of defraying expenses to the city of Malden Community Preservation Fund for the budget period fiscal year 2023, 7/1/22 to 6/30/23, the sum of money named in the accompanying Schedule E, being the same, is hereby appropriated to the accounts and the purpose and objects therein stated and explained, and is hereby provided and ordered that the appropriation enumerated in said Schedule E be in the amount of $1,138,690.
Very good, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to sign you up for reading a book to the kindergarten. You did a great job there, give everybody a little bit of levity, and certainly allow the clerk to catch his breath, the Bruins are losing 2-0 in the middle of the second period, for those who want to keep score, with four minutes left, so hopefully they can pull through.
Motion to refer to finance.
Okay, on Counselor Murphy's motion to refer to finance, all those, seconded by Counselor Winslow, okay, on seconded by Counselor Winslow, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Looks like it carries 9-0. Next order of business.
Paper 237-22, Order that City Council approve an increase in the COLA base from $16,000 to $18,000 for contributory retirees and survivors of the Malden retirement system.
Counselor Murphy, you want to speak on it, or you want to refer?
It's definitely going to be referred to finance, but I just wanted to explain it a little to those folks who are new here, and I'll be quick about it. Basically, a retiree, let's say a COLA raises 3%.
You might want to explain what COLA means, Counselor.
Cost of living increase, so if the cost of living increase for the year is, let's say, 3%, and a retiree's pension is $20,000 a year, that 3% today only gets applied to $16,000 of the $20,000, this is a request to increase it to $18,000. It was increased last year to $16,000, so we went, we knew they were going to come back and ask us for this, we'll be having an in-depth discussion on it, it is a little complicated, there are actuarial statements that we need to understand, and also there is the time of the pension plan being paid out over the next 20-some-odd years that we need to reckon with, and how that all fits together. So this is one more thing that is going to challenge us, because it's time-sensitive also, so in conjunction with doing the budget, we are going to be having this discussion on the retirees' pensions. So motion to refer to finance.
Hold on, Counselor O'Malley?
I know that this came up last time, and the timing was inconvenient, so I appreciate that this is coming up with some runway. I was wondering if it would be possible to refer it to a joint committee meeting with finance and the Strategic Finance Committee, because there is definitely a strategic, long-term financial impact of this, it wasn't clear the last time this came before us, so it would be really helpful to have our treasurer, controller, a representative from the mayor's office, and both the finance and that committee, I'm assuming it's a pretty big overlap between those two committees, but if the chair of finance is willing, I would be willing to second or...
Absolutely, Councilor Condon is chair of that committee, and he's also on finance, and certainly we would have Mr. Renigan, as well as folks from the retirement board involved in the conversation as we did the last time, so, and the actuarial study is in, so, you know, we'll be going through that, so.
Okay, just hold that amendment, Counsel, if you don't mind, Counselor, I believe McDonald has a comment.
I was actually going to ask a very similar question, since this came up in our last long-term financial planning, so I, joint hearing, I would support that.
Yep, I agree, great idea. So, on Counselor Murphy's motion with Counselor O'Malley, I'll make him second, suggestion to do, refer this to finance and the Strategic Planning Committee, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 11-0, it's been referred to both the finance and the Strategic Review Committee. Next order of business.
Paper 238-22, Order that the Malden City Council establish a food policy council.
On Counselor Crowe, do you would like to speak in the paper, Counselor, or you just want to refer it? Go ahead, Counselor Crowe, the floor is yours.
I'll be very brief, I'm just going to refer this to rules and ordinance, and if you remember, not too long ago, where we see, sorry, my eyes are watering, the community food assessment?
Yep.
That was done, and that happened pre-pandemic, so actually, there's a lot of good data on what, because it started in 2018, sort of where Malden is in their food security or insecurity, and one of the ultimate goals of the community food assessment was to channel the information gathered and to have a plan of action to achieve equitable access to healthy food. Establishing a policy, a food policy council, as the leading coalition that really looks at those recommendations and creates that community food plan is step number one, so this is just creating the community food plan, and again, as we know that the food insecurity has been exacerbated by the pandemic, it's really good to be taking a look at that and see how we're going to move our community forward, so just make a motion to refer this to rules and ordinance.
On, who's going to second it? I got two seconds, so I'm going to do a two-second, because I see it both flash at the same time. So on Counselor, I would just say, you know, certainly, it's even more of an issue with the cost of food drastically increasing, and everybody knows what's happening, so certainly a great paper. So on Counselor Crowe's motion, seconded by Counselor Hayes and Counselor Seika, all those in favor? All those opposed, 11-0, it's referred to ordinance, next order of business.
It's a committee report, and the chair of license asked that I read all the papers together.
You're on a roll for reading, so read them all together.
Paper 239-22, Committee Report, License Petitions. Okay, I want to, the Standing Committee on License, the ones for the following papers are considered the same, make the following report, and these papers be reported out favorably to the full council. Paper 203-20, you want to read, you want to accept the committee report first, and then I'll read the paper?
Yep.
These are getting referred.
That's committee report.
But that's the next list.
You got to go to the page before.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm right.
It's still in the beginning, yeah.
You jumped ahead, okay. On Counselor Seika's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, Counsel Seika for the committee.
Now, the papers are 203-22, Petition, Open Air Lot 29 Madison Street LLC, of 29 Madison Street, 40 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 204-22, Petition, Open Air Lot 25-37 Florence Street LLC, 25 Florence Street, 34 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 205-22, Petition, Billiard License, Ancient Order of Iberianians, Inc., Division 12, 259 Charles Street, one table, it's a renewal. Paper 206-22, Petition, Billiard License, Malden Vets of Irish Ancestry, 177 West Street, two tables, it's a renewal. Paper 207-22, Petition, Billiard License, Townline Tenpin Corp., 665 Broadway, 15 tables, it's a renewal. Petition, Paper 208-22, Petition, Bollin Alley License, Townline Tenpin Corp., 665 Broadway, 48 lanes, it's a renewal.
On Counselor Seika's motion to grant these petitions, you want to speak, Counselor?
No, that's...
Okay, on Counselor Seika's motion to grant these petitions, all those in favor? All those opposed, licenses are granted, 11-0, next order of business. I believe this is the place on file.
Paper 240-22, Committee Report, the Future Mapwood Square Committee, make the following report to the full council, that the council president appoints Barbara Chiove...
Can he say it, Counselor?
Coovie.
Coovie, I would have never guessed.
Coovie, of 19 George Street, Malden, Ward 6, as an additional resident member of the Future Mapwood Square Committee.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, Counsel, you want to speak for it before I place on the file?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to put the mic on, sorry, Counselor, Counsel Winslow.
No, just happy to have another resident come and join the committee, and, you know, that's good, we're moving forward, and I just appreciate moving ahead, and we'll save personality involvement in this one.
So just for the public and the councils, as, when you add somebody to a committee, the part of the process, the president is, they have to approve that person being on the committee, so I hereby report Barbara Coovie as a resident member of the Future of Malden Square Committee. Maple, I'm sorry, Mapwood Square. And I place on, we're going to place on file, right? And place on file, so there's no vote needed to place on file, next order of business. Paper 2...
Paper 241-22, Committee Report, Finance, Paper 144-22, order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 134, the City of Malden initiate a process to authorize appropriate departments to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity loan in the City of Malden and for other related services in consultation with the Department of Energy Resources, and to develop a plan for review by its citizens detailing, detailing the process and consequences of aggregation, electrical aggregation program.
So this is going to be a two-part process because of financial implications, so on Counsel Murphy's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So it does carry 11 nothing. Counsel McDonald for the committee? Uh, give me one second, Counsel McDonald. There you go. I like your patience there.
Thank you.
You're touching the button, you're learning.
Little by little. Uh, thank you all. Hopefully, this can be a quick discussion. We had a great discussion about this in Finance Committee. I went through a couple of slides that I'm happy to share with anybody who would like to see that, tried to post those on Facebook as well, just so folks have access to that information. This has been a bit of a road that we've got here, that has gotten us here, but I think there's broad support in this, in Malden and across the councils, what we saw in the, in the committee, for this path of developing a municipal aggregation plan for our electrical supply in the city. We, just to reiterate a couple of points for folks who haven't tracked this conversation so far. These are plans that are authorized by the state of Massachusetts. It allows the city to negotiate a bulk rate on your electricity and to include more renewable energy from Massachusetts suppliers in that automatic rate. Ratepayers do have the opportunity to, to just take the cheaper rate and opt out of the additional renewable energy, and a number of our neighboring communities right now in, in Melrose, Medford, Stonem have these in place. They've gone very well, they're very popular, takes a little bit to roll them out, but once you get the process done, it kind of runs itself. And interestingly, in these, in our neighboring communities right now, their negotiated rate, not for just some additional renewable energy, but for 100% full renewable energy, is actually cheaper than the standard national grid rate that you get. So it can be a really good deal for consumers. Savings are not guaranteed, that's important to note, because national grid rates fluctuate up and down over the course of the year, but it does stabilize rates, and it hedges against that, and we've shown in practice that it, that it is a saving for consumers. The biggest consumer benefit is that it prevents, or really reduces, the amount of telemarketing and harassment at the doors that folks are getting from these third-party renewable energy companies that want to sell you a great deal on saving the environment, and then, you know, your next bill comes up and, and, you know, bam, there's a huge charge, variable charge, and so, you know, I think especially some of our seniors are, you know, it's easy to get taken advantage of with these situations, but knowing that the city is going to step in and negotiate this on your behalf and get a good rate really helps cut down on those, on those calls, because the companies do look at that, and the Attorney General's Office did a whole report on this to show, you know, how this is happening, and, and this is one of the important things that a city can do to, to, to push back against that. So it's, I think, a great opportunity for consumers, good consumer protection. It helps us get closer towards our overall goals for sustainability and, and renewable energy in the community that I know so many of us share and so many of our constituents share. So I'm excited to have us go forward with this. Assuming the council passes tonight, we'll happen, and so work with our Public Facilities Director, Eric Rubin, who's our liaison to the, or our staff member of the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Commission, who is a consultant that we work with, will, will find the folks that can help us kind of get through the process here. There'll be public hearings, the state has to approve our plan, and then we'll be able to go out and get the bids for what we have, for the, for the plan that we want. We hope that we'll be able to get that to move quickly. It's been taking cities recently months to years, frankly, to get the state to get back to you once you file the paperwork, so it could take some time, but we've been working with our state delegation, Senator Lewis's office, to try to get them to pressure the Department of Public Utilities to come back quicker than that, because that's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. So hopefully, we'll be able to usher that process along. I just want to give a final word of appreciation from the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Commission. They were going to have somebody who was here today just to express their, you know, support and appreciation. They'll help continue to support the process as it moves through, the work with the mayor's team, but that person just couldn't make it at the last minute. So just wanted to convey that message for the commission. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Eric? All right, thank you. So I, I humbly ask for your support for this.
Okay. Counsel Linnahan, you have your mic on? Is that correct? Yeah, one second. Oh, we got a bunch of lights. Just want to remind, the next one we're going to vote on is for the paper, so Counselor, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Linnahan, I jumped the gun. So Counsel Winslow's first, then Counsel Linnahan, then Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Winslow?
Yeah, Counsel McDonald, thanks for that great summary. I know this is something that, that we, that we had referred to the energy and, if it, Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Committee last council, so I think it's great that this, the committee's moving forward and, and that. I think it is a great thing, as you heard from like Karen Buck, one of our most sophisticated environmental folks in the city, that, that even she was confused about what happens out there, let alone our seniors, so I think it's great that we are working collectively to, you know, reduce our energy and, and maximize alternatives to fossil fuels. I think I appreciate, and it'd be, this'll be a great step forward for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counselor Linnahan now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor McDonald, for moving this forward. This is very exciting, definitely fully supportive. I did want to acknowledge that there was a lot of work that went in, both to this council, prior councils, and former Counselor Kamel, but the way you've really taken it up and, and run with it to make sure that it's a priority and get it done quickly so that we can enter that DPU process, which you said could be quite lengthy. I think the community appreciates it, you know, remains to be seen what kind of savings we realize, but I think either way, it puts us on the path to getting us towards having more renewables and, and doing so in a way that the community can trust and not having people subject to, you know, solicitation, and, you know, I think we all probably get calls, like, who's knocking on my door? Is this legit? Be nice to just have a, an alternative to that that's authorized by the community. The one question that I did have, which it's okay if you don't have an answer today, but I'm wondering how it affects solar customers or people who are, you know, generating renewables right now and are not paying, you know, they have a zero balance or they're sending credit, they're experiencing credits, can they still opt in even if they don't have a bill? And if they do, if their energy exceeds, or if their spending exceeds that, then it would just be part of this program? Just something I was wondering about.
Think you stumped them, Counselor. Counsel McDonald, you make so.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. We can check in with our consultant. I mean, the way that it'll work is you'll, everybody who sees a, a rate on your bill will see it reflective of this agreement, right? And so the, you know, but if you're not paying it, if your, if your net metering is actually back to the grid, I don't, I don't know if that would have any impact for you. So we can, we can look into that. And also, I appreciate you raising up Counselor Kamel, and, and he did a lot of good work on this, which I, I neglected to acknowledge in, at this moment, but when he, when he left, you know, the council, we, on behalf of the commission, just really wanted to promise to carry that forward and get it, get it to the, over the finish line, which is really more like the starting line, but nonetheless, to make some metaphor, I hope, Dave, that you're watching and appreciation for your work on this.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counsel Linnahan, you all set?
I, the only other thing I want to say is that I just hope we can do our community outreach, you know, in languages and just do a really thorough job. I know it's expensive to get the word out that way, but it really, it affects everybody, so to the extent that we can do that in an inclusive way, it'll be much appreciated.
Thank you, Counsel Linnahan. Counselor Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I, you know, I sat in on Counsel McDonald's being, and I just want to say, I thought it was a very elegant and well-thought-out plan, and I commend you on the paper, and I support you on your paper. Good work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Feel the love, Counsel Simonelli. Thank you so much. Counsel McDonald, I, I will say, as somebody who was the first energy, energy efficient chair, I know this was discussed numerous times before that, certainly not taking anything away from you, because you actually did start it and push it over the finish line, but I know the rules have changed, it made it much easier for the cities to actually do this, and even after your speech, it still doesn't seem like it's that easy, because it could take months, but it was even harder, if you could believe, several years ago, and it was an ongoing topic that just was, just, you know, very hard for the city to initiate, so I appreciate it from someone who sat in the committee and understand the work that's being done, and certainly Counsel Kamel, and, and I'll recognize Mr. Rubin, too, for a lot of the work that's been done. So, great work. Onto the next paper, and this is the, the good part, we get to vote. Did you already read that, Mr. Clerk? 144? Okay, he read it, okay. So on Counsel McDonald's motion to adopt, seconded by Counsel Simonelli, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. It is adopted, 11 nothing. Next order of business.
Dark it is clear.
Ooh, the dark, wow, the dark it is clear. Bruins are down three nothing, so everybody take your time, we're not going anywhere. Counselor Crowe hit the light first. Counsel Crowe?
I like that. So just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday from 10 to 1:00 p.m. is Malden's Bike Fair. Counsel Winslow and I have been working on this for the last couple of years with other community groups. It is going to be at the Ferryway Parking Lot. We have bike helmets and backpacks and water bottles, and you can, you know, get your bike tuned up, there's like a lot of safety, you know, obstacle courses, we have the police and the fire and a few other things that are going to be out there. It's going to be a great day, the weather's going to be perfect. So again, you want to register, you can register for 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, or 12 o'clock time, and the reason for that is just to kind of make sure it's all spread out and not have a, a whole rush. We started that during COVID when we first did this one, and it kind of worked out well to kind of keep things moving. We also have some refurbished and new bikes that will be for raffle, you'll get a raffle ticket, it's, everything is free. It's going to be a great day, I think we'll have a lot of fun, so I hope everyone comes down, will register first, and come on down to the Ferryway Lot anytime between, I mean, not the Lot, the parking lot, between 10 and 1 on Saturday, and then you can go over to Counsel Linnahan.
Thank you, Counsel Crowe. Counsel Simonelli's next.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to say today, you know, I remember when I was a city council years past, they used to do this thing called a neighborhood walkthrough, and we, we rejuvenated that and brought it back to life, and we went out today as the first half of it with the mayor and 10 to 12 department heads with clipboards, and we walked through the neighborhood, and we were able to identify certain things that needed to be fixed. We got to mingle with the public, which was great. The constituency down there, they were very happy to see us and feel very energized, that people are out and about, trying to take care of their concerns as we're walking up and down the street. And, you know, we've identified several different things. We've identified a area that we are going to put a, a garden, like Counselor Murphy has, you know, a planting garden down in the Noon Street Housing Development, which I think will be well, be well-supported down there. We've also identified several parcels for affordable, affordable housing and affordable home ownership. We've done that, we've pioneered that in my district a few times, so we were able to be down there and identify parcels of land that look very enticing to be able to create affordable living, both rental and affordable home ownership. So it was, it worked out very well, and, you know, I would suggest that, you know, anybody that wants to, wants to go ahead and do that, it's a, it's a good process to get through your ward, and you have all the department heads there with clipboards, and they take down from everything, from fire hydrants that need to be painted, you know, I've been talking to Alex up in the MRA office, and he had showed me this heat map, which is pretty interesting, and, you know, Malden is very red, so we plan on doing an operation beautification, which will include planting and, you know, spreading some mulch in the islands and some of the memorials, but we also plan on doing a aggressive, and I will talk to Counsel McDonald about that down the road, because we've talked about it in the past, an aggressive tree planting program, to be able to give us some more shade so it can relieve some of the heat, because at nighttime, you know, the heat starts to dissipate from the ground, from the hut top that's out there, and if we don't have enough trees just to, to absorb that, you know, we're, we're in a hot zone, and we really got to start paying attention to that. We have a simian relationship with trees and nature, and I think we need to start to participate more in that, so we're going to do that down there. But again, I want to thank the mayor's office for dragging them around my neighborhood for two and a half hours. I did provide lunch, I did, so at Lincoln Commons, it was a nice time, and I want to say thank you to all the department heads that spent two and a half hours with Chris Simonelli on Red Bull. Something to see. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli. Counsel Linnahan?
Well, there's not going to be any Red Bull at my event Saturday, but maybe you can bring the Red Bull.
I'll bring them.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe, for the, the handoff there, was a lot going on Saturday. I've mentioned it before, but just wanted to give a reminder that we're going to be having an arts and culture festival Saturday in the parking lot across from the Malden Courthouse on Lower Summer Street. We're going to be having musical and dance performances, some interactive arts workshops, some of our creators and artisans are going to be selling some of their stuff there. There's going to be an ice cream truck, I think, I should have made sure that was like 100% before I announced it, but now I'll have to figure it out. If it's not for certain, it's going to be there now. It'll be from 12 to 4, you know, family-friendly, come on down, free event, you'll get to interact with the team that's been visioning what we want to do with the courthouse, give us your ideas, meet some of our local artists, and then, of course, you know, you can go out to dinner and grab some food at Pearl Street or one of the other restaurants that's around the area, or head out to one of the other events that's going on. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli, Counsel Linnahan. I'm going to be giving the cheer to Counsel Murphy. I apologize, my wife's, my, my daughter's at dance and doesn't have a ride, so I get to go pick up my daughter, and then, if my wife's watching, get to yell at my wife for not picking up my daughter at dance, so I apologize for leaving, you'll be in good hands, everybody have a good night. Counsel Winslow, and then you, Counsel.
All right. Counselor Winslow.
All right. Counselor Winslow. Thank you very much. So, yeah, very much looking forward to the Bike Fair this Saturday, and I know, you know, thanks to the Malden Fire Department, the Police Department, and Cataldo Ambulance and New England Security that will, having some features for, for that part of the event, and Bike to the Sea, which will be there, part of their Bike Kitchen, which they're working to sort of set up a, a local bike repair program, they'll be there, and if you need a tire fixed and that type of thing, they'll be there, so, besides, Enmas Bike Coalition, Safe Roots to School will be, for kids who are learning to bicycle, they'll be there, so very exciting for that. And then I also want to remind folks, May 21st is going to be Maplewood Fest that I've been working with Counsel Murphy on, so we're very excited about that. That's going to be a street fair from 12 to 4, right in the heart of Maplewood Square, and Counsel McDonald as well. We have several bands that are going to be playing, we're going to have some demonstration of karate and, and dancing, and characters, and there are going to be some vendors there, and, you know, come out to Maplewood Square, have a good time, have some, you know, go visit the local businesses. I know Counsel Hayes has been working on a, some sort of scavenger hunt, should be a fun time, and, and then come down and enjoy some of the, the food down in the square as well, so looking forward to seeing everybody on May, Saturday, May 21st. Thanks.
I'm back. Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Fossil, thank you, Counsel Murphy, and for those, I never said that about my wife, I will deny it, even though it's on camera. Counsel Murphy? I know, I know, I know.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just really quickly, this Thursday night, there is a comedy night at the Irish American that's being sponsored by Malden Overcoming Addiction. This is the third annual Together We Can Comedy Night. It's a great event, I've been there many times, they're, Dave Russo and friends will be performing, so there's some, you know, comedians that will be entertaining us, there's also silent auctions, raffles, music and food, all for the price of $25. It's, you can't feed it, it's fun, and it supports, you know, the ongoing effort at helping people into recovery and helping families understand addiction and what they can do to help their loved ones. So hopefully, we'll see many of you Thursday night. The doors open at, hold on one second, doors open at 6 o'clock and the show starts at 7:30.
at 6 o'clock, and the show starts at 7:30. So once again, Irish American, this coming Thursday night, $25 for a great night, for a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing all the lights. If I could, oh, Counselor Seika, I don't have, oh, wait, I can, I can't, I can't have personal privilege, even though I was, I was running out? I just want to thank Counselor Crowe for putting on her annual Mother's Day breakfast. Counselor Seminelli was there. Great work, great location, as usual. But you had, I think, the biggest crowd I've ever seen. So great work there, certainly on that. Also, I know Counselor Linnahan noticed, too, but for those who live in Ward 3, Community Preservation Act, the Wallace Park, which is known as BB Hill, they've been doing the restoration of that wall. So I want to thank the Community Preservation Act Committee, and certainly, I think the Malden Historical Society was the one who put it forward. So it's nice to see that wall being cleaned up and then certainly repaired. So it's nice, like I said, having that Community Preservation Act dollars, which we've always put into parks, to see that wall saved for hopefully another 100 years. It's great. So I just wanted to give a shout out for that. With that, Counselor Seika's motion adjourned, seconded by Counselor Condon. All those in favor? All those opposed? Council is adjourned.